Hello Minnesota, welcome back. This is the Tony Hernandez Show. It's Saturday, October 19th. We've got a great show today. Before we bring on our guest, we're gonna have Johnny Howard on. He's running for the St. Paul City Council. But I wanted to give recognition to our fantastic producer, our hard-working producer here, Dallas Pearson. He actually won an award with Suburban Community Channels. He won the 2013 Technical and Production Excellence Award. And we're extremely thankful and grateful to have Dallas here, working so hard as a producer. He does everything from making sure the cameras are set up, that the audio is correct. When we bring in Sam with Skype, he makes sure that that's all set up and everything. So congratulations Dallas for winning the award. And we wish you the best and we thank you for all your hard work. And with that, we're going to bring on our first guest. We have Mr. Johnny Howard here. His website is JohnnyHoward.net, N-E-T. And he's running for the St. Paul City Council. Johnny, welcome to the show.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate this.
Yeah, and you were saying that you've had a pretty busy day today so far. What have you been up to?
We started door knocking at nine this morning. We quit at two o'clock.
Wow.
So we hit hundreds of doors. So it's just been a great day. We had close to 20 people out door knocking in the rain. So it was just a great day. But people are committed to work with this campaign and try to make St. Paul a better place.
Yeah, well, it's starting to get a little colder out here in St. Paul. Actually, I don't know if you saw, but I was kinda in your neighborhood earlier and it looked like rain, but there was a little bit of slush and ice in there mixed in. Did you see that out there?
They said we might get a little snow. They said we might get a little. And so we gotta make sure that this snow and this weather don't keep people in. We gotta get people out to vote this year.
And can you remind us, what is the day of the St. Paul City Elections?
November 5th. It's November 2nd, November 5th. And the smart thing to do is to write Tuesday, November 5th, Vote Johnny Howard.
Tuesday, November 5th, Vote Johnny Howard?
Yeah, that's the only thing you need to remember.
Yeah, and your website Dallas, we could put his website up on the back screen here, but your website is JohnnyHoward.net. And I actually looked through your website. It looks like you have a pretty long history of community activism in St. Paul and the Frog Town neighborhood. Can you just talk a little more about how you got your start in the community? Was there some sort of instance that happened? Or was it just, is that just how it's always been?
You know, I moved to Minnesota in 1984. I met Council President Bill Wilson at that time. And I ended up working on his campaign and door knocking and working with him. I did an internship in Bill Wilson's office. From there, I began to do work in the neighborhood. My work started in a neighborhood called the Thomas Dale neighborhood. That's a geographic part of Ward 1. And you know, St. Paul is a city of a lot of neighborhoods.
Oh yeah.
So the Thomas Dale neighborhood, if people lived east of Dale Street, they said they lived in Thomas Dale. But Dale to Western, they said they lived in Frog Town. And then past that, they said they lived in Thomas Dale. In the late 80s, early 90s, that was one of the worst neighborhoods in the city of St. Paul. If there was a shooting, a drug bust, prostitution, a rape, a murder, it was in that, they called it, they said in Frog Town. I began to work, as working for Bill Wilson, I began to do organizing for him. And so I created an organization called the Thomas Dale Block Club. Our mission was to develop a sense of pride in the neighborhood. And that's a big mission, but it was an important mission. So at one point, people would be in charge to walk up and down the streets. So we put t-shirts on neighbors that said Frog Town Power, Frog Town Pride. We chose that because we had this negative thing, Frog Town. And so we put those Frog Town Pride, Power Frog Town Pride on people. We had two sports teams. We had Westmanee Ha Ha Football Program and we had Shepherd Football Program, both underfunded and didn't have a lot of kids on it. We brought the two teams together, we called them Frog Town Football.
Wow.
We didn't have a business incubator in our neighborhood. We created an organization called the Frog Town Action Alliance. We were intentional about the way we used to name Frog Town, to take that negative and overpower it with a positive. We didn't have a group addressing housing, so we helped to create the Greater Frog Town Community Development Corporation to address housing. Again, we were intentional of making that name positive. The city was doing a poor job of maintaining vacant lots and empty houses in our neighborhood. And so we created a program called Frog Town Four Seasons. And we began to clean up all the empty lots in our neighborhoods. And through that program, we created a job program where we employed felons and those hard-to-employ people. And even back in the early 90s, we were paying $13 an hour.
Wow.
We were paying $13 an hour.
What kind of work were they doing?
Cutting grass and shoveling snow in their neighborhood. But we didn't let that X or any of those other letters stop people from trying to provide for their families. And so what my point was, we took that negative name Frog Town and we intentionally put it on everything we did to make it positive. For Christmas, we gave every member a coffee mug that said Frog Town Power, Frog Town Pride. And so we flipped it. So now that neighborhood is not Thomas Dale anymore. It's called the Frog Town Neighborhood Association now. So I like to think that we played a little role in that. And the secret to that is one of the reasons I'm running. St. Paul's strength was based on citizen participation. My organization was about engaging, involving, and inviting people to be part of the process. That's where I run into problems with the city as it runs now. St. Paul's a great city that could be even better, but we got to reengage people, re-involve people, and invite them to be part of that process.
So when you founded these groups, did you run into any resistance, either from neighbors or externally? Or did people right away jump on board with what you were doing?
I would say our first 10 meetings, you figure three, four, five thousand flyers, we may have six people. You know? And so the six of us would meet, but we door knocked, and we door knocked, and we door knocked, and we asked people, "How do you want to live? What type of neighborhood do you want?" And people told us. And after we door knocked for a while, the numbers started to grow. The city was used to doing things a certain way. You know, we need police officers to get off their seats and get on their feet and walk through our neighborhood. Well, it was resistance there. We held a tribunal where we brought the mayor, the chief of police, the county attorney, all the elected officials in. And we found them guilty of allowing misdemeanor crimes to destroy our neighborhood. And so we gave, we sent all those people out with marching orders. We said to the chief of police, prostitution is a problem. So we helped to create the internet posts on the Giants and Prostitutes. That came right to Thomas Dale Block Club office from our desk. We went to the judges and said, "It's misdemeanor crimes that's destroying our neighborhood." So we helped to create the community court position. That came right from the Thomas Dale Block Club, the community court, the community prosecutor. We, you have to take a look at the problem and then identify the solution. And you do it from the bottom up. Issues in your neighborhood shouldn't come from downtown. You define what you like, what you dislike. And that was our style of work.
So Johnny Howard, there's something you talked about that really caught my attention. And specifically, it was issues with people in their youth. And when people make bad decisions, say when they're 18, 19, 20 years old, maybe they get some type of criminal record at that point. And these records oftentimes haunt these people for the rest of their working lives, whether it's a felony on the record or even now employers check your credit and they check other things. What sort of things can the city do? If you're elected into the city council, can you do anything to help people who want to turn the leaf over and start a new life and get back into the workforce?
We have to be, we have, and the city and the county does a good job internally in not letting those X's hold people back. But anybody, any organization or firm that's receiving city dollars, they should be held accountable too, that we can't let people's paths hold them, hold them back for their future. And so, you know, grandma says, "You can look if you can get up." So you made a mistake. How do you move forward? We got to make sure we don't let people's barriers, their paths, hold them back. And so I'm pushing and I'm gonna fight for the right for felons to move forward. We can't have a productive society when we holding people back.
No doubt.
And so the city has to step forward. If you're gonna get city dollars, then you're gonna hire our people. And some of our people got some marks. Some of our people have some flaws, but these are our people. And so I want to make sure that we put people first in everything we do. That's one of the reasons I'm running under the Green Party. The Green Party said, "Leading, listening, and putting people first in everything we do." Think about this governor shutdown. Those were two different groups, grown folks acting silly at our expense. Leading, listening, and putting people first in everything that we do. And that's one of the reasons I want to run and I'm proud to be running under the Green Party.
Yeah, can you talk a little more about what the Green Party is? Are there some like pillars or principles that the Green Party stands for? And how is it different from the DFL?
It's really not that much different in the philosophies, but in principle, putting people first, not politics. Putting people first in every decision you make. And then thinking about this, is that they say our children are less than 10% of the population, 100% of the future. So if we don't pay attention to what we put in the ground, if we don't pay attention to how we take care of our land, what are we leaving for our children? If we don't begin to eat better, if we don't pay attention to transportation, if we don't begin to walk more, bike more, we're not gonna be as healthy as we need to be, as we ought be. The Greens Party is, the whole thing with the Green Party is, take care of yourself, take care of your people, take care of your land. That's how you boil it all down, is about being responsible citizens. And that's the difference. The DFL and Republican Party right now, they wanna argue over, "I'm a Republican, I'm a Democrat." You're a person. We wanna, we wanna work with you to do better.
I think that that's an important message, that more and more people, it probably resonates with them. And are you finding that when you're going out door knocking and talking to your neighbors? Do they ask you, you know, when you knock on a random door, do they ask you, "Are you a Republican, are you Democrat?" Or do they ask you those questions right away?
And the time I tell them, "Green," I get a smile. You know, not that, I got some staunch, I got, I got three Tea Party members that got Johnny Howard lawn signs in the yard. They said, "Would you put a Tea Party, a lawn sign, a Tea Party, a Republican's yard?" I said, "Well, yeah, you got a right to vote for the person who you think will best represent you." He said, "Well, I'm Tea Party too." I said, "You still got that right." But people are paying attention to the message that we are trying to give, that we have responsibility. Do you know when you take elected office, you say, "I want to be a public servant. I want to serve the people." And that's what we're missing. You want to represent the people, then treat, listen to them. Paul Wellstone said, "When you do good, we all do good." That's part of what we're operating from. Door to door, people are saying, "Why aren't our streets plowed on time? And why can't we plow from curb to curb? And why do our streets get smaller and smaller?" Poor management. Poor management. I said two years ago that I had concerns with some of the city departments, in particular the Department of Safety Inspections. I said that two years ago. Three months ago, the state took over part of that department. We gotta take a look at how we're managing. We pay decent and good salaries, then earn them. Do a better job.
And can you talk a little more, your past, were you born and raised in St. Paul?
No, I'm from Michigan.
Okay.
You know, now, here's the deal. I'm 58 years old. And so I came to Minnesota when I was 28.
Okay.
Wet behind the ears kid. At 27, 28, 29 years old, you can want to do everything you can want to do. You can try to be everything that you want to be, but until you really get some time behind your belt, you know, behind you, at 28, what did I know, really? At 29 years old, what did I really know? But I grew up, for 30 years, I've been in this neighborhood, working and walking the streets and trying to be positive and trying to make a difference in people's lives, because that's what I enjoy. You know, and so, you know, and I tell people, it really doesn't make a difference where you're born at. It's not in the land, it's in the man.
Yeah, well, you've been here for 30-plus years too, I'd say.
That's my adult life.
Yeah.
You know, I tell people.
What brought you to St. Paul?
I worked 30, 33 years for the Ford plant.
Okay.
And so I retire, I'm a retired auto worker. You know, I've been a union man all my life. My whole family is union people. But what I was gonna tell you, this work, in my days, we had Batman and Robin and Superman. They were superheroes. Superman used to leap off of tall buildings and stop locomotives. That's superhero. I believe when you can feed the hungry, when you can help homeless people get in the housing, that's superhero work. And I get a kick out of that when I find somebody that's struggling and say, "We can do better. You can do better. Let me work with you. Let me show you how to do this. I can't do it for you, but if you work with me, I'm gonna show you how to do it, how to get there. Together, we can make a difference." And that's the message that we got to teach and get back into St. Paul. Our district council system is where the neighbors organize. We set up the zoning requirements in our neighborhood. We talk about how we want our neighborhoods and the hours we want our public facilities open. We should be talking about the infrastructure, what we want in our neighborhoods. And we gotta tell people, "That's your responsibility and that's your power."
And then with, you said you worked for the Ford plant, you retired with Ford. What were your feelings when there was talk about closing down the Ford plant? Was that something that you had feelings for either side? And do you think that the city should have done something to try to keep the Ford plant?
It shocked me. I think that the city probably got involved too late. I think the decisions were made, and I think they probably got involved too late. That's one of the problems I have with the current leadership in City Hall, in particular Ward 1. It seems like we're an afterthought in everything that happens. You know, with the Ford plant, I think the city got involved in that conversation too late. But in Ward 1, light rails here, hopefully it's gonna be a great thing. But around light rail, we're thinking backwards. We should have had a parking plan before we broke ground. We should have had a better plan to address business retention and how to help, how to help these businesses survive before we broke ground. And those are the concerns I have with the way we do things in the city. We shouldn't be an afterthought. We should be at the, we should be at the table. And so often, we're not at the table. When the job, when this thing was being designed, there should have been a plan, how are we gonna guarantee that St. Paul people, in my, in my case in particular, how are we gonna guarantee that Ward 1 people are trained and ready to go to work? And that didn't happen. We gotta make sure when these new stadiums are built, we should have training programs in place right now, training our workforce to be ready to do that work. And that's leadership.
Is that happening right now?
No, it's not.
These plans are...
You know, we're one of the most, you know, Old MacDonald had a meeting. Here a meeting, there a meeting, everywhere a meeting, meeting. That's the, that's the, that's the style in Ward 1 right now. Under the current administrations, in the past few years, they meet. They meet to meet, but they never make a difference in the lives of Ward 1 people. And so we need a plan to address training people, getting people ready to work, training them on the soft skills of employment. We're gonna teach you how to do these jobs, but the soft skill says, "Five minutes to latest, five minutes to eight is late. Get there on time. Be ready to work." And so those are things we gotta talk about publicly.
Well, let's talk about that a little more then, okay? So say, the people of Ward 1 elect Johnny Howard to the city council. A relevant issue moving forward is the St. Paul Saints Stadium. There's a lot of people that are looking to perhaps build that in the downtown area. What can you do as a city councilman to start making those plans? You know, you talk, meeting is one thing, but how do you take that to the next step and produce that into measurable actions?
My entire career in neighborhood organizing has been about partner, been around partnerships, collaboration, and relationships. And so right away, we need to start partnering with the people that are employing and training people. Understand, we got unions here. And if you are a laid-off union worker, you wouldn't want to see this new kid that just turned 21 working and you sitting at home laid off. But we should have internships. We should have mentorships, where they can begin to learn. You don't, you don't want the rookie electrician plugging up the wires. But we got to have the relationships to start getting these people ready, ready to work. So day one, I want to build relationships with the organizations that's gonna be bidding these jobs, with the contractors that are gonna be designing these things. It's about relationships and collaborations and training. You know, and so that's been my history. I've worked with, I used to do this event called Reclaim the Community Month, 31 days. So if you can think about planning one large event, the work it takes to put an event together, we planned 31 days of events back to back.
Wow.
And so we had to have a lot of partnerships and a lot of relationships, but that's how you build neighborhood. People knowing people. People working with people. That's crime prevention and that's neighborhood building. You know, we have 600 police officers roughly in St. Paul. That's 1,200 eyes. No way in the world they could see this entire city. So one of the things I trained in my block club organizing is that we must be the eyes and ears for the police department. At the same time, we have to be the heartbeat, the pulse of our neighborhoods. How do you want to live? That's a big question.
And you've been living in St. Paul for quite some time. I was born and raised in St. Paul and I've seen some changes. You know, the core of the city, it's still, it's still there, it's still intact, there's no doubt. You know, crime is something that you've been deeply involved with within your community. And I want to know your opinion, has the level of crimes or the types of crimes, have they changed over the last 30 years of the frequency? Or is it pretty much the same show that we're dealing with now that we are back then? Is it the same or has it changed in St. Paul?
It's gotten better. St. Paul, and this is just my opinion now, St. Paul has did a real good job in addressing crime prevention. It started, now I started my, my walk in crime prevention with Bill McCutcheon. And then when Ben Corky Finney became chief, he started pushing what's called community policing. That's police and community, police and the neighborhood working together. And so St. Paul has held its own. We got issues in St. Paul and there's been some problems in St. Paul. But St. Paul, in my opinion, is ahead of the game with most cities, with our law enforcement community. We got some pretty dedicated people. Our current chief and our current sheriff, they came from the rank and file. They, they used to walk with me during Reclaim the Community Month. And so I like to think about that, that I used to lead them around the neighborhood, now they lead the city. But you know, St. Paul has did a good job in the area of crime prevention. What we have to do is get our neighbors now to start organizing again. Cut your, you cut your porch light on tonight, I'll cut mine on tomorrow night. And then you cut yours on the next night. That's crime prevention. Neighborhood organizing, crime prevention, sit on your porch. And everybody ride down your street, speak to them. Don't let anybody, don't let any strangers come to your neighborhood and not know that somebody's looking at you and their neighbors looking out for each other. St. Paul has did a great job and a good job in the area of crime prevention. Now what we got to do is community building. These young boys that's acting foolish. How do we begin to address that issue? These are bad boys. And so we gotta create and identify programs. Hopefully, we can get them in programs instead of prison. Hopefully, we can get them back in school instead of prison. And so we got to be, make sure we having programs to get these boys in, to try to get them off the street. At the YWCA of St. Paul, they got this program called the Impact Program. In that program, we're teaching employment, job readiness, but more importantly, I used to teach over there. I facilitated a class. And at the beginning of every day, we did a positive quote. And we asked those children that were Christians, "Get up every morning and thank God. You're a Christian. If not, find, every morning, get up and give yourself a positive affirmation. Find something good about you, because before the day's over, something's gonna happen. Go back to that positive moment and never have another bad day, have a bad moment, but be positive." So we got to figure out how to approach these young boys on the street. And let me tell you, I hate sagging. I hate these boys walking around with their pants down. And have pride in yourself. And so we gotta start having public conversations with these young guys. You can do better. You can be better. And so it goes to parenting. What are you teaching? What are you showing your kids? TV is one of the best babysitters in the world. You can put your TV on channel two, your child's gonna learn, "Please, thank you and pardon me." You go up a few channels and you know what they're learning. And so parents got to really start paying attention to what they're allowing their children to hear. And then as a neighborhood, we got to set standards on what we want in our neighborhood. So we got to look at programs for these boys, not prison.
So on top of that, we've had guests in the past. We had the school board candidate, Chu Wu. We've also had a gentleman named Danell Tenner, who wrote a book on education and closing in on the achievement gap. And specifically here in Minnesota and Twin Cities and in St. Paul, there's a pretty sizable achievement gap by measure of mathematics, reading comprehension, and graduation rates among African-Americans, Hispanic-Americans, and Hmong-Americans right here in St. Paul. So there's a definite division among the races that way. And I guess I'm wondering, you know, I know you're running for the city council, but what is the relationship between the city council and the school board? And is there anything that you can do to foster this relationship to help African-American students, Hispanic students, and Hmong-American students here in St. Paul?
You know, I've been the neighborhood organizer for over 30 years. I'm blessed that I've had a lot of great people around me. I've never had the chance to run a community-based organization that dealt specifically with African-American people. I've served on some boards with some African-American groups, but in the neighborhood, when you want to talk about the achievement gap, from the city council, the city council's job starts with when your child walks out of the door. When they get to the schoolhouse door, they ought to make sure that child is safe and that walk or that ride to school is safe. I believe that the city councilmen's job is to address what I call the opportunity gap. If mom and dad has a decent-paying job, a livable wage, and they don't have to get off work and go back to work, I think that would give them time to read to their child or have their child read to them. I think that begins to address part of the education issue in our neighborhood. If you can't teach a hungry child, if a child is coming out of a dysfunctional neighborhood, just disorderly neighborhood, then that child is gonna be hard to teach in school. If you as parents are running a dysfunctional home, you're raising an unteachable child. And so what we got to do is make sure, first of all, that we help mom and dad get to work and get a decent job. And then we got to make sure that we got decent, affordable housing, so that a child has a base. Because as you move in every 90 days, that's gonna, that's gonna disrupt your education. Let me stop here and say this. A friend of mine always says this, "The best social service program in the world is a job." So I don't want to create any social service programs. What I want to do is talk about hope, love, and possibilities. And so we want to get people to work and tell them, "Dream with and dream for your child." We can do that from the city council seat. We can make sure that you have a great neighborhood, that when you come home, you feel good about it. That you got a decent-paying job and you got a decent home. Read to your child. If you, if everyone... If you, i- i- if everyone would take the next twelve months, don't take a budget increase or anything and pay a little bit more attention to your babies. And begin to read with your child. We got um, English as a second language classes, right? Well, we got some folks born and raised right here in America that messed up and got caught up in life and they didn't finish school. So we gotta get them back in school and, and, and educate yourself as your children get educated. We gotta go right back to the home and start doing a better job of being parents. Let me read with you, baby. Read to me. Let, let's work on these problems together.
That's a, that's a very powerful idea that you just brought up. Could you imagine our city, Saint Paul, if every parent took ten minutes a night and read a short book to their, to their kid?
Would take any money?
Be an unbelievable result if every parent would just read with their kids for ten minutes every single night.
Yeah.
Be uh, unbelievable. But I'm, I'm glad that you're bringing up the jobs issue uh, in Saint Paul in particular. If you study the, the history, the business history of Saint Paul, you know, go back forty years downtown Saint Paul, the, the area, you had the Ford plant, you had uh, Whirlpool, uh, West Publishing used to be uh, right downtown. We had all these huge private employers that provided very decent wages and salaries for residents of Saint Paul. And a lot of these businesses, they, either they're gone to the suburb areas or they've left the state completely. And uh, I'd like to know Johnny Howard, if you're elected, uh, what can the city do to foster an environment where uh, either businesses wanna come back and plant some roots in Saint Paul? Or the entrepreneur, small businessman or woman can start a business and, and grow right here in the city? And, and then also I wanna know is, do you think Saint Paul is a, a business friendly city?
Two things. You, you really gave the answer in your comment. Saint Paul to me, our responsibility is to create a city that you want to bring your business to. That mean we gotta have decent parks, decent recreation center, good schools, so that I not only wanna bring my business here, I wanna bring my family here. So how we address the infrastructure, the big picture, how we make Saint Paul look, that's really important. I served on the city's business review council in the early nineties. Our charge was to make Saint Paul a friendlier place to do business. I think they're missing it right now. It's not friendly and i- 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 it's not friend, it's too hard. And we don't have the programs to help businesses get off the ground right now as a city. In the eighties and nineties, Saint Paul had a long program for startup businesses. They don't do that right now. We got to make Saint Paul, it's not as friendly as it could be, it's not friendly as it should be. But we had to make Saint Paul so attractive that people are looking, I, I wanna bring my business over there. And, 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 and we can't give it away neither. We, we can't cut it out, we can't, we can't cut taxes with all of them. We just got to make our city so attractive that people wanna come here.
Mm-hmm. And I'd imagine too, the part of it is just planting seeds in the minds of our youth, you know, where they believe that they can achieve, that they believe that if they have an idea, if they work hard for it, they, they can see that idea grow into fruition where it creates other jobs and helps other people support their families.
The last job I had, one of the things we did with our young people is we told them, we need you to dream and we encourage you to dream. And so we, we took them on job sites just to meet with people. How can you dream about being an architect if you've never seen one? And we took them down to the police department and we talked about the different jobs within that department. You know, we need more people of color in our police departments, but they gotta see that as a career and a, and a, and a, and a, and a honorable, honorable career. And so we gotta see the police in a different light and that starts in the neighborhood. That starts in our rec centers, in our schools. Not done a drug raid or a drug bust or a car accident, is walking the street, introducing yourself, that's community policing. And then they just see, they need to see these jobs. And so we got to do a better job. Say, we got to promote Saint Paul. Neighborhood by neighborhood, ward by ward.
Hmm. Well, we're almost uh, coming to the end of our time, Johnny Howard. Uh, I just wanted to give these last like a minute or so to talk a little more about the, the nitty gritty details of the campaign. Uh, first of all, Ward One, Saint Paul, uh, can you describe the geography of, of Ward One in Saint Paul?
Sure. We go from Summit South Front, that's the north, north end, um, north side of the ward. Snelling to the west and John Ireland, um, to the east. So that's all of Ramsey Hill, all of Frog Town Thomas Dale, all of Summit U, um, all the Lexham neighborhood and part of the Snell Hamley neighborhood, all of that's Ward One.
Okay. And then for people who live in Ward One in these neighborhoods, how do they uh, get out to make sure that they're registered? I- is there a place that they can go to, to see if they're registered and if not, that they can register to vote?
In Saint Paul, you can register day of, so. Go to my website, johnnyhoward.net and we'll be able to tell you um, where you vote at and, and, and so we'll, we'll direct you where to vote at. But in Saint Paul, that's one of the great things about our, our state is you can um, register on the day of election.
Okay. And, and the, the last question is, um, in Saint Paul, I, I can't remember, do they have that ranked choice voting?
It is ranked choice.
And can you just explain briefly, cause I don't think anyone fully, fully understands it yet as it's being implemented, but, but how does it exa- how does it work?
Yeah. Well, I got my own analogy.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you ever been to the horse track, you got win plays a show.
Mm-hmm.
And that's my way of explaining ranked choice voting. Win Johnny Howard ranked somebody else and somebody else is your show. And so it's really, if you know that this is your number one person and you, you feel good about this person, but this, thi- this, this candidate here, they just been terrible and I don't agree with anything they say, but this one here I might could live with. So you, you, you just take your, your, your best choice, but I could live with this one, but not this one. And so put your number one choice, one, you know, there. And then the guy that's tolerable, you put them second. So it's win plays a show, that's the best way to describe it. Johnny Howard then plays a show.
Sounds good. Well, uh, thank you Johnny Howard for coming on the show. I certainly appreciate that and uh, wish you the best and.
Well, we wanna be back after November fifth.
That'd be great. You're welcome uh, to come back anytime and uh, we'll see, hopefully you'll be back as city councilman of Saint Paul.
That's our dream.
Well, thanks for coming on. It was a pleasure to get to know you.
Alright.
So that was uh, Johnny Howard, he's running for the Saint Paul City Council. Uh, again, uh, his website is J O H N N Y Howard, H O W A R D, uh, dot net. Uh, looked like a pretty great guy to me, looks like a strong candidate and he, he has some great ideas to bring some uh, fresh vision to Saint Paul and to really re-establish our communities as well. So uh, with that, we're going to be tapping into our east coast correspondent, uh, Mr. Sam Wayne Pierce, if I can uh, figure out how to bring him on here. And uh, Sam, are you, are you with us right now?
Hi Tony, hello Minnesota.
Hello Sam, how are you? That was a pretty impressive uh, candidate that we just had on Johnny Howard running for the Saint Paul City Council, don't you think?
Yes, uh, I'm glad that you brought that up. I, I wanted to, before we get into our news topics, I wanted to make a couple comments. Uh, I, I don't know Mr. Howard personally, but what a heck of a candidate. I think maybe we should be sending him to Congress. I, um, e- everything he said was, was, uh, he, he made a lot of good points. Tony, I don't think you can overstate the importance of family. He talked about that. He talked about parents and their relationships with their kids and reading and, um, and then, and then one thing that just resonated with me when, when he said, um, programs over prison. And it just seems like he has such a, such a grasp on what young men in this country need. And, and young men need to be a- as boys and as, as teenagers and young men, they need to be in programs, whether it's sports or, or some sort of team building or like he said, uh, job development skills. Young men in this country more than ever need to be involved in things. They need to have a sense of community and I really liked everything he said.
Yeah, there's no doubt about that. And I think that the esteem part of things too, with, with young men and young boys especially is uh, it's a very fragile thing to be able to keep. Because once that esteem part is lost or if somebody gets a ding on their, a criminal record or, or something, to try to build up that esteem again, where they feel like they have the confidence to enter into the workforce or to uh, interview for a job or to, to network for a job. I, I, it's, it's absolutely crucial because, I mean, let's face it, if you have a a DUI on your record or if you have a, say some type of a drug charge or something, it can be the end of the world for that person, but at the same time, these are things that can be overcome. You know, just because you, you, you screwed up in the past, it doesn't mean that uh, your employment viability for the future is detrimental, really. And Johnny Howard talked about that, it really comes down to building yourself back up again, re-establishing your esteem and, and I think the community and the strength of the community that surrounds that person is probably the biggest predictor or determinant of uh, that young man or woman's success.
Agreed, agreed. And he, he, uh, I love that he talked about the importance of the community, neighborhood watch, sit on your porches, pay attention, talk to each other. That is, that is so important and so much of that is, seems lost in, in American, uh, in America, but maybe more in American cities uh, than small towns. And, and I think he just made so many excellent points, so I wish him all the, the best of luck in his candidacy.
Yeah. And uh, so I brought this up at the beginning of the show, Sam, uh, Dallas Pearson won uh, the suburban community channels award uh, for two thousand thirteen. Technical and production excellence, pretty awesome, isn't it?
Yeah, Tony, uh, I wanna congratulate Dallas as well on the award. I can speak from my own personal experience when I say that everything, all week long, uh, the emails we get from Dallas and the input and the leadership he provides to putting the, the show on from the time that he calls me on the Skype and, and we prep for the show and coming on the air. He and the staff there do such an incredible job, everything runs so smoothly. And when I was in studio last summer, I got to see just how much work they do. So Tony, for you and I, it's easy, we just get to come on the air and, and talk. We benefit from all of the production and preparation that Dallas and, and the staff do for us. And um, we, it, none of it's possible without them, so job well done. I, I congratulate him and, and thank him.
Yeah, and you, you, there, there's nobody that works harder than uh, than Dallas Pearson, there, there's no doubt about that. I mean, the guy lives, breathes and eats video production and, and apparently he's got a full-time job too and, and, and he's married. So don't ask me how he pulls those two other feats off at the same time, but.
Well, Tony, um, I, I, I'm glad you uh, I'm glad you, you gave us a chance to give Dallas some praise. But uh, like Dallas, another great Minnesotan was in the news this week. I was really happy to hear the Baltimore Ravens quarterback Joe Flacco speaking so highly of Matt Burke on ESPN yesterday morning on their, on their main morning show. And I wanted to ask you, what, what's all this about? What's going on with Matt Burke's fitness challenge?
Yeah, it's pretty, uh, it's pretty incredible. Um, Matt Burke, since winning the Super Bowl uh, with the Ravens has, uh, you know, he retired from the NFL with a Super Bowl ring, which most people right then and there, they're like, okay, time to golf and, you know, go to exotic vacations for the rest of it, but not Matt Burke. Uh, he has decided to take on a new venture and, and it's uh, part of the Vi Fitness Movement. And if you go to uh, the Facebook page, it's Matt Burke's Fitness Movement. So if you type in, in Facebook, Matt Burke Fitness Movement, uh, you'll find his Facebook page. Uh, but since winning the Super Bowl, he's lost seventy-five pounds. And he's done it just through uh, eating healthy, uh, working out every day. And uh, he's entered into a, a contest to become the next Vi Fitness Model, which they have a, a, one model every year, so this is for twenty fourteen. And so they're actually collecting votes and there's only one day left and he's number one right now. Out of hundreds of people who have submitted uh, their pictures uh, for this contest, he's number one. So if you go to that Facebook page, uh, Matt Burke Fitness Movement, uh, you'll find it that way. And uh, go, go and vote for him. I think there's only like one or two days left to vote and uh, it's pretty incredible. So if he wins and becomes the two thousand fourteen Vi Fitness Model, uh, he'll have an incredible platform uh, to get out there. And uh, basically he's on a, a, a mission or crusade to end obesity in America. So it's pretty uh, it's pretty phenomenal. I give him an incredible amount of credit because, I mean, if you go see the picture, he's got his shirt off and, you know, like, I mean, that takes a courage, like you wouldn't believe, like, could you imagine doing that, Sam? Like, having the show, the whole country, a picture with you with, with your shirt off, like posing and.
Uh, you know, Tony, I mean, no, uh, actually, uh, no, I can't. And uh, and he, uh, he looks like he's in tip-top shape and, and the, the viewers should, should not only vote for him, but also, uh, I think you mentioned like his Facebook page for this movement because he gives all sorts of great tips and tricks and um, fitness tips. Now, diet, how much water you should drink every day and when, uh, how you should work out. One of my favorites was the time, uh, time under tension trick where he says, instead of doing ten or twelve reps, try and do reps for a minute straight when you're in the gym lifting. He talked about how um, you should, the more sophisticated and scientific the equipment, chances are the less good it's doing. And I thought that was very insightful because push-ups and pull-ups and chin-ups and sit-ups are a lot harder than the machines. But anyway, you can get all sorts of advice from him on, you know, like I said, diet, working out, healthy lifestyle.
Yeah.
Real impressive.
Yeah, my, my favorite tip that he offered uh, was when you wake up in the morning, the, the, one of the first things you should do is drink sixteen ounces of water, preferably at room temperature. So you just drink a glass of water. And so I've been doing that ever since I, I read that tip on the Facebook page, Matt Burke Fitness Movement. And it's actually a great way to start the day, like I, my hunger pains kinda disappear. I eat less for breakfast. I, my stomach and the organs apparently, they get, they get working and um, I thought it was a pretty simple but effective tip to live more healthy.
Absolutely. Yep, great, great stuff.
So uh, Sam, what, have you been paying attention to the news? I read uh, something somewhere um, that Condoleezza Rice has been chosen uh, to be part of the NCAA tournament selections. Can, can you talk about that?
Yeah, Tony, this is a, this is a good transition for us because Matt Burke obviously made his name on the football field and, and the former secretary of state, Condoleezza Rice, this week was in the news um, in part because she was never on the football, football field, obviously. Um, what happened was she was named one of the thirteen inaugural members of the college football playoff selection committee. So Tony, to make a long story about college football short, major college football really, really needed uh, a better system for determining its champion every year. Um, so starting next year, this thirteen-person committee will select the top four teams at the end of the season to participate in the playoff. The committee is made up mostly of older men that have been around football their whole lives. Uh, Archie Manning, who played college football then in the NFL and now he has the two famous sons Peyton and Eli in the NFL. He's an example of the type of person that's on this committee. Well, uh, also on the committee is Condi Rice. And of course, that drew some criticism. Notable critics came out and said, how can she possibly make important football decisions when she's clearly never played football? And Tony, I understand that logic. I, I understood the game a lot better after playing and I'm sure you'd say the same thing. But it's not like college football named Condi Rice King of the Game and whatever she says goes. She's one of thirteen on a panel that will make these decisions. She's a huge fan, she's a student of the game. When she was the provost at Stanford, she oversaw a, a very adept, successful athletic department. So Tony, I think a year from now, we'll be talking about what a, what a great job she's done. Or we won't be talking about it at all because it'll be a non-story because she's doing so well. And I think this week, she actually had the chance to address some of her critics and did quite well.
Yeah, we did. And we're going to, uh, we're going to line up a, a clip here of her actually that was on ESPN. So Dallas, if you could uh, help us to line that up. And uh, we'll get that going and we'll just see how she responds to some of the criticism and some of the questions about her being uh, uh, picked for this.
Of the selection committee.
Well, I was first approached by Larry Scott, who's the Pac Twelve Commissioner. And uh, Larry said that they were putting together the playoff committee, uh, the committee to select the four teams for the national playoff. And he said, uh, a number of the commissioners would like you to serve. And I said, well, why on earth would you want me to serve? And uh, he talked about the importance of having people with diverse perspectives. He talked about the importance of being able to make decisions under pressure. And uh, then he talked about And uh then he talked about the fact that I've actually been a part of the college football system. When I was Provost at Stanford, Stanford Athletics reported to me. So I've been in and around this game for a long time. I'm a huge fan of college football and I'm really looking forward to having a chance to try to get this playoff system right.
So you didn't lobby for the job, they approached you aggressively.
Well, um Larry Scott actually took me out to dinner and talked to me about doing it. I had to check into time commitments and the issues. I also uh called Bob Bolzby, my old friend from Stanford, who was Stanford's Athletic Director and is now Commissioner of the Big Twelve. And I also talked to uh to Jack Swaric- Swarick at Notre Dame because I just wanted to have a sense that this was something that the um commissioners would really be happy to see take place. So I did my homework a little bit before I said yes.
Now, you've received overwhelming support, but there have been a handful of critics. Former Auburn head coach Pat Die was asked about the selection. Condi, he said the following quote, "All she knows about football is what somebody told her or what she read in a book or what she saw on television. To understand football, you gotta play with your hand in the dirt." I love Condoleezza Rice and she's probably a good statesman and all of that. But how in the hell does she know what it's like out there when you can't get your breath and it's a hundred and ten degrees and the coach asks, you got some more? Condi, if Pat Rice, or Pat Die, excuse me, were sitting here right now, wh- what would you say to him?
I would say, Coach, I respect you. I remember your great run at Auburn and I certainly respect you, but I just respectfully disagree. Uh there are others on the committee who've not played football. I I just might note, you know, with all due respect to my dear friend Roger Goodell and Paul Tagliabue, probably the most influential NFL Commissioner was Pete Rozelle. He never played football. So you can be a student of something and not experience it. And I consider myself a student of college football. Um I am, Colin, after all, a a student of Russia, but I've actually never been Russian either. Uh you can, you can know something from following it and studying it and I spend a lot of my Saturday with college football.
So Sam, do you uh, do you happen to agree with that uh anal- analysis that she made? Do you have to experience something or play football in order to know football?
Um to to a certain extent, but I think, again, she's one of thirteen on a panel, Tony, so I I think she will do just fine. I think she will bring a unique perspective and and like I said, a year from now, I I don't even think we're talking about it. But there is another former Secretary of State and leading lady of politics that I think we will be talking about for quite some time, that's of course Hillary Clinton. Tony, news out of Atlanta this week is that Hillary took a subtle jab at one of her possible twenty sixteen presidential primary rivals, one of your favorites, current Vice President Joe Biden. Uh is this a story or should we just expect to start seeing Hillary taking jabs at all sorts of people for the next three years?
Well, yeah, I I've read something about that. There was apparently at this private, I I don't know if it was a fundraiser or some type of a political event where there were no cameras, no reporters allowed, uh but there did happen to be a Republican Congressman who was in the audience and he was the one who went out and uh leaked some of this information. But apparently, uh she took a a jab at Vice President Joe Biden because uh he said that he actually did not wanna go in and uh kill Osama bin Laden. And uh just, I thought it was, I thought it was pretty interesting.
Or certainly that he was uh much more cautious about it, but that she, the heroic Hillary, knew all along that this would be successful and it's hey, you know what, I'm sure it's it, all the credit goes to her, you know? Um it's uh, it's interesting because after Mitt Romney's uh little episode with the forty-seven percent comment in a fundraiser, I think this is gonna be the new normal, that we get these bits and pieces of stories that come out of fundraisers and conferences where the media is not allowed. But that, you're you're right, that's what happened. A Republican Congressman was in, was at the event. He went to the Atlanta Journal-Constitution, the newspaper, told this story. Uh I'm not shocked.
Yeah, and you know, it it, if I had the choice, there's no doubt I'd rather have President Hillary Clinton than President Joe Biden, no questions asked. And I'm actually going to make a pretty bold prediction here on the Tony Hernandez Show. I know we're a far way away from the two thousand sixteen election. Uh but here's my prediction is, Americans are going to be faced with a big choice in two thousand sixteen. They are going to be faced with the choice to vote for either President Clinton or a President Bush. I think it's gonna be Hillary Clinton versus Jeb Bush in the two thousand sixteen election. Do you think that's a good prediction, Sam?
Ugh, uh certainly i- it's gonna be the former Secretary Hillary Clinton running for for President on the Democratic ticket, I I have no doubt. Uh oh wow, uh another Bush and another, I don't know, Tony.
We could, we could do our, is there royalty in America? Episode all over again if if that turns out to be the case. But it doesn't seem like that there is anyone that's gonna emerge from the Republican field uh except for Jeb Bush. He seems to be the one that has the most momentum and most people calling for him to enter the race. And of course, he hasn't uh announced his intentions or anything with that yet, but uh we'll have to see. And we'll have to see as well as to what kind of a role Obamacare is gonna play in the two thousand sixteen election. It'll be interesting.
Yeah, and and Tony, I think you need to uh call me out a little on a few weeks ago when I said that we needed to give the Obamacare exchanges some time. Um so uh so since since we're all for accountability here on on the Tony Hernandez Show, um look, I tried to give the federal exchanges some benefit of the doubt based on my own professional understanding for how difficult and massive software rollout is. Um but they've had several years and and several hundred billion dollars to work with. And this isn't just glitches or simple coding problems like, you know, Nancy Pelosi would want you to believe. Um it's an unmitigated disaster. Uh I'm gonna give you in our last couple of minutes here some estimated numbers. But first point out, the federal government hasn't even released its own official numbers yet, Tony. This would be like Apple telling its shareholders three weeks into a new iPhone or iPad release. We don't know exactly how many we've sold yet, but trust us, business is good. Um that being said, some private sector analysis has revealed that in the first week, less than one percent of those people that wanted to sign up actually got signed up and enrolled successfully, Tony, less than one percent. In the three weeks total since it launched, the best estimate I could find in my research was that about thirty-six thousand people have been successfully enrolled. The Obama Administration's been claiming that this will ensure almost fifty million uninsured people ultimately. Um an estimate of almost ten million people tried to sign up. Thirty-six thousand is a tiny fraction of ten million or an even tinier fraction of fifty million. Uh this is uh, this is, this is not off to a good start for uh for the Obama Administration and it will be interesting to see how the Republicans run against it in two thousand fourteen and how both sides handle it in the two thousand sixteen presidential election.
Mm hmm. And it's all gonna, it's all gonna be determined by the results. And I know that MinSure, which is the local Minnesota exchange, uh their enrollment numbers, they're out. Uh as the Star Tribune reports, they're a bit murky. Uh there's conflicting numbers here, but I'll go off of this report from TwinCities.com by Christopher Snobek. Uh he said more than thirty-seven hundred people have used the website of MinSure. Uh and then he said that that tally includes four hundred and six Minnesotans who are making plans to pay for private health insurance policies that they got through the state-run marketplace. And then they said an additional three thousand, three hundred sixty-three people, state residents have used the Health Exchange website in the two weeks since its launch to determine eligibility for Medicaid and the Minnesota Care Public Health Insurance Programs. Um these aren't staggering numbers and, you know, one thing that I brought up over and over uh during our campaign was was the fact that Minnesota, we actually have an incredibly high coverage rate. Ninety percent of Minnesotans have some form of health insurance, whether it's from their private employer, whether it's from Minnesota Care, whether it's from Medicaid, Medicare. Uh ninety percent of our our citizens are covered. And the the ten percent, they estimate, they're not covered simply uh just based off of choice. Like they choose not to be covered because they're young and healthy or whatever. So it remains to be seen what Obamacare is gonna do uh to increase coverage or or to help people who who really need it. And uh we'll just have to see as these weeks and months and years go forward. And uh Sam, we are out of time here. I'd like to thank everybody for tuning into the Tony Hernandez Show. We broadcast live every Saturday from four o'clock until five o'clock in SCC Television Studios and on our YouTube channel, Tony Hernandez Show. May God bless you, may God bless America and vaya con Dios.